Okay, I shouldn't be looking at that. 606.
Here.
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 Here?
Okay, do we have any public comment? Nobody here?
We don't have any public comments.
Okay, we're moving to board discussion number one. Supporting students and families to ensure safe learning environments, district and community actions. We have a board of education presentation by Dr. Blanco and staff, and then community partners input. Would you like to begin, Dr. Blanco?
Sure. This is a brief overview of what we have been doing to protect our students and their families, and the support that we have been providing to our school site leaders. And we have some of our school site leaders and other staff with us this evening that can also add to some of the supports that have been given. And, you know, we invited our partners here this evening because we want to know if we have any blind spots, right? If we're missing some things that we can be doing a better job. And to every extent possible that we can do that's legal, we want to do that. So, the first page. Who's operating the slides? Am I? Okay, thank you. Talks about Hopeful Horizons is what we've called our call to action. Dr. Reynoso is the main point person, but the whole superintendent's leadership team works with her. And we've been meeting monthly from January to the present to try to keep a pulse on what's been going on in the community. We did provide some information for the public, that is, school guidance from F3 that includes what we can and cannot do. And then we have a confidential manual that's for internal staff only that really helps them know what to do should, you know, anyone come to their school site with a warrant. And then we have an ad a glance that we shortened it so that they would have a one-page summary and be able to have it next to their desk. And an emergency response line for internal staff, which it's one line that's only used for this type of an emergency. And then some of the steps that we have taken, because the law changed and officers, ICE officers can come into public spaces now where in the past they were not able to come to churches or schools, but the front office is a public space. So, we have signage on all of our classrooms because those are private spaces, and that is allowable even with the revisions in the law. So, next slide. This is just all of the policies that we have shared with our staff, and we wanted the community to also be able to have access to them that, you know, that are around this type of situation. So, it's our policies for student records, visitors, campus disturbances, immigration support resources, search and seizure, nondiscrimination employment, response to immigration enforcement, questioning and apprehension by law enforcement. And then reaffirming our commitment to safe and welcoming schools was done in January when Ms. Holy took over the presidency. And then SB 98 really is the right to inform about integration. So, we wanted to make sure that everyone had access to this. Not going to take a lot of time going into all of this because I want to give our community partners the time, but all these resources are there. And then the next slide really shows some of the trainings that we have had since January for the staff, including principals, APs, counselors, mental health staff, office staff, assistants and advocates, and our summer leads training that we wanted to make sure where they were all informed and knew what to do because that's really where the activity was starting. But we also have provided the supporting immigrant students and families toolkit to our staff from Laco. So, the next slide talks about summer safety protocols. We do have our new secure entry cameras, and we made sure that everyone understands that campuses are non-public spaces with single-supervised entry points. Families receive phone calls in addition to emails. Food services arrangements have been modified so that we're not putting our families at any, you know, risk of exposure in more public spaces. We have buses and field trips with our routes that are delivering our children to more safe places with inside the campus whenever possible. And then we have a lot of trusted staff, the volunteer and the company students to public bus stops. And our staff have, trusted staff have also delivered groceries and donations to families that need it, that may be in fear of leaving their home that, you know, they may tell somebody at the school they trust. And so, a flexibility of options that we have for families is, we don't have hybrid learning at the time right now. We would have to negotiate that with our labor partners, but we can encourage, you know, students to enroll online at our Center for Independent Study if they need that. And then we will distribute equipment, and we have given additional home book, hotspots and chromebooks to our students. And one thing that we've encouraged several times is for our families to update their emergency cards so that they have a trusted person that's able to pick up their child anytime in the event something would happen, that there would be somebody that students could stay with so that we would not be calling any agencies on students that might be left behind at school for any reason. So, that's the quick synopsis of what we've been doing. And now I will turn it over to our principals and other staff to talk a little bit, maybe what's happening at your schools. And Ms. Garcia, who works very closely with the International Academy students, is here with us.
Before that, what if we have questions about what you presented? Oh, okay, great. Is Hopeful Horizons a program that you bought, or is this a title that you gave to your offer?
It's a title that we gave.
Okay, and when you say staff training, what does that mean? And I clarify, does that mean you train, and that is exclusively for staff training, right?
Yes.
Okay, and that means socio-emotional, or does that mean policies? Or what is the training?
I would say it's all of the above, particular with our teachers. We focus more on the social-emotional aspects, particularly after the fire. Our teachers told us, you know, we're not equipped to deal with trauma in ways that we need to be able to. But with our administrators and people responsible for programs, it's more the protocols and understanding what we can and can't do, and having examples of if somebody comes to the school with a warrant, what a federal warrant looks like versus somebody just coming with a warrant. But I can also let the staff talk to you about the training.
Okay, so what I heard was that the social-emotional was as a response to the fire, and then as a response to other issues, there was straight training in terms of policy?
Protocols. What to do if somebody shows up at your school? What kind of signage we should have up to, you know, make sure that all our schools are safe?
Compliance with the law?
Yes.
Uh huh, okay, great. And then you talked about the scope of the trainings later on. Again, you talked about the summer training, and that's, what is the scope of that training? Again, compliance with the law?
Both, right? What to do if students need social-emotional support, if they're coming to school and saying they need help? Who's working in the summer? Who do you contact? Pasadena Educational Foundation has their own system for emergency cards, making sure emergency cards are all updated. But, you know, we've been a trauma-informed care district for quite some time, even prior to COVID. But it's when you're actually working with the children who are experiencing the trauma, it's different than when you're doing the theory lessons, right? When people are, children are feeling okay. So, I think our teachers have asked, you know, for more training in this area, and our launch of the school year is going to be based on this.
So, the summer training has been in terms of order of command? Like, if this happened, you contact this, you contact this, you contact this? And then in terms of what are the resources? This is the list of resources?
Yes.
But there was also like a class of dealing with PTSD or like things?
There's been, there has been training throughout.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the summer training.
The summer training, I would have to ask the principals if there was something for that in the, there's only one day of summer training. So, I know at our welcome back, when we returned, we did that training. And then we work with the Western Justice Association as well, and there was summer training around that. I attended it myself, so I could get you a list of all the trainings.
So, just to clarify, as we scale up, as the, as we scale up at the beginning of the school year, the ideas that these individuals identified in the trainings will then scale that, will then extend that training to the district?
Yeah. So, our launch for the year is going to be all focused on social-emotional training. Usually, we have a lot of academic training. We are required to teach some of the teachers how to use the universal screener, so they won't be able to attend as many social-emotional sessions because of that. But with the exception of those grade levels, everybody else in the organization will be invited to training that focuses on social-emotional health.
Can I ask one question? To piggyback off of trustee Dr. Velazquez about the protocol training? And there was like a refresher for the, or all of these sort of policies and protocols. Were those trainings sort of a role-play training, or more of a slide presentation training for, especially for the staff that are at the, you know, managing the entryways?
They were more of a presentation from legal.
A presentation, okay, thank you.
I've never done, okay, there it goes. Elisa Perez, proud principal at Madison Elementary. And I've been part of the Hopeful Horizons Committee since January, and it was during the fires and even during this turmoil with our political climate now that it was pretty bad for us at Madison. But thankfully to the Hopeful Horizons Committee, I feel very, I feel very prepared, not for if folks were to come, but more so when they come. We have reviewed fake warrants, sample warrants. Everyone on campus knows that we don't open the door. Madison is a very special community. We are a community school, so I'm proud to say that we know absolutely every family on our campus. So, right away, we're like, whoa, wait a minute, who are you? You know, and the first thing is we ask, are you on the, we're going to go check if you're on the emergency list. But we know every single family. And we've been able to build that trust with our, with our Madison students, our Madison community. We've tried to continue things as much as we can since before, since what we've been doing the last few years. I'm proud to say that we've continued our food distribution. We've just had to modify it in some cases. And what does that mean? What does that look like? Well, instead of distributing food out in the sidewalk, now we just moved it over to the auditorium. We know every single family, so they just walk into the auditorium. We've actually even expanded. Now, we've partnered up with a kind organization, and they're helping us out with toiletries, so we've been doing that every week. We've also started encouraging, we have, and I was expressing to Vanya right now, we have seen a dip in attendance unfortunately, especially with our summer programs. But we have, we have such an awesome community that we're encouraging carpooling, right? Carpooling. Folks live near each other. A lot of people live near each other, so we're encouraging folks to carpool. Come together, right? If one family doesn't feel comfortable, there's other families, I have emails from moms saying, no, Dr. Perez, let me know, I'll pick up whoever you want me to. I'm not working this summer. So, we're encouraging carpooling as well. There is food insecurity right now, too. I was telling a friend the other day that I feel it's a privilege to be able to walk around, you know, being able to go to the supermarket. I feel it's a privilege to take my child to school without fear. And she corrected me, and she said, you know what, Elisa? It's not a privilege, it's a right. It should be a right for you to be able to drop off your child without, without fear. And that's what Madison has become. We've made sure that it's a safe place for our families and for our communities, where people feel welcome. There are times when people will be like, Dr. Perez, I heard that they were at the corner. We just opened the door, don't worry, come on in, you know, come on in. I'll go check. So, we go and check, and we haven't seen anything. But I've also, we've had such a positive response from the community in general. I've seen Vanya drive around. I feel like she's our security, you know? She drives around. I've seen Mr. Harden, too, drive around, right? Driving around just campus. And that's really what it's about. It's ensuring that, that our school is safe, and we're doing everything we possibly can to make sure that happens. And I feel very confident, especially with the information that we've been getting. Dr. Blanco said monthly basis, I feel that sometimes we even meet a little more than once a month. We meet several times depending on what's going on. We did have a scare about a week and a half ago at Madison. When I got to campus, everyone was on campus. Everyone was on campus throughout the morning, and the afternoon, during pickup. So, we're very fortunate that we've been able to collaborate with community partners. We've been able to collaborate with the district, and we're going to continue expanding in order to be more proactive. And in terms of what does that mean, or what does that look like? Right now, we're working on creating a safety plan, a family safety plan. And that's not just in case of deportation, but just in general, fire, earthquake, right? What's a safety plan? So, that's something that we're creating. We're also continuing with our food deliveries, our toiletry, our toiletry, when we give away toiletries, we have a big event planned out for the Back to School Bash. But like I said, Madison as a community school, we're very fortunate that we know every single one of our families. And we also have a list of folks who have expressed, hey, this is what's going on, and so we know that they're at the top of our list. And thankfully to those collaborations, even with PEF, we've been able to deliver some gift cards to folks. And, and we're doing the best that we can, as long as, we're doing what we can with our families, but my big thing is for them to, for them to know that, that we're a safe place for them, and that we'll, we'll do practically anything we can to ensure that their kids are okay and that their family is okay.
Hi, my name is Reina Uca. I'm the incoming principal at Washington-Stem Elementary Magnet, so I will be officially starting tomorrow. However, despite not officially starting, to Dr. Blanco's credit, or in her team's credit, I have actually been part of those trainings, so I understand the protocol. I have access to that one-pager. And, and I also have mentors like Dr. Perez, who I'm going to be working alongside to make sure that I'm, you know, fully, fully understand the protocols, the process, and what to do, what not to do, what I, what I can do to protect, support my students, right? The other thing about, Dr. Perez was talking about Madison being a community school. Washington is also a community school. The staff at Washington is fully committed to supporting the students and their families, and making sure they feel safe. The staff at Washington knows who the kids are. Obviously, I'm new, and even though I do my weekly check-ins, I have a lot to learn and have a lot of families to, to learn, and a lot of students' names and backgrounds to learn as well. But I'm here to promise and let you know that I'm fully committed to taking on that work and, you know, leading the charge in making sure that students and their families feel safe, and to what Dr. Perez said, that they understand that they have a right to be educated, that they have a right to feel safe, and they have a right to show up and not be afraid.
I'm sorry, can somebody repeat the question for me because I walked in late?
So, right now, Pastor Myra, we're just having our school staff report on the short presentation that I did, and then we're going to turn it over to our community partners next.
Oh, there's another one there, okay.
Push, okay. Good afternoon, everybody, or good evening. It's light so, so late now. So, my name is Maria Teresa Garcia, and I provide support for the International Academy at Blair. And listening to your presentation, I could really connect to a lot of things. You know, we have a program running in the summer, and I think out of everything, I've been thinking about what I was going to say because there's so much, but communication has been so important. I realized when I was checking with the community, like Dr. Perez here, you know, we're very close to our parents. I think I have, practically have all of them in my phone, which makes it so much easier. But calling like a parent, I always like to give examples and checking up on them to see how they were doing with, with their food security, and them telling me, hey, you know, so-and-so has already covered me from families and transition. I know that that's happening a lot, you know, and that's so important. It's going to continue to be important that we communicate. I had Erica Villalpando reach out to me and say, hey, Ms. Garcia, you know, I have some students that we usually, you know, we provide therapy for, they're saying they're not feeling comfortable attending. Can you help me, can you call the parents and talk to them about that situation so I know? That's going to be so crucial coming up in the next year, that communication that we have between us, you know? One thing that I wanted to point out is that we tend to think about the kids that are, you know, that could be in jeopardy, or the families, but there's so many others that are silent, that are living the same thing, and we don't know because they're so used to living that way. They don't ask for help. I feel like we really need to reach out to everybody because there's so many families like that, so many students that won't say. It's really affecting, like a domino effect to the families and the students. There are those within a family that are okay to go out, they're okay to go to school, they're okay. And then there's others in the family that are not, and that's really important when we talk about mental health. That's something that I think we, like you said, we need to focus on a lot, I see that. You know, we were, we've been able to provide some food security, thanks to Yarma here that reached out. Thank you so much, because throughout the summer, we've been able to help a lot of families, and having them stay where they're at, and we've been taking the food to them. Thank you for that. I wanted to thank you publicly because not everybody goes out on a Sunday and do all that work that you've been able to do. But basically, we need to do a lot with the mental health, with the food security. How do we use our resources in the best manner to, for them to feel comfortable with it, too? I had a family, I talked to her all year, and I said, hey, you know, how are you with that? Do you need this? I can go and, and deliver it for you. She said, who is, she was so nervous, she didn't even recognize me. I said, you know, this is Mrs. Garcia. And she said, I'm so sorry, there's people calling, I'm so nervous to answer anything anymore, you know? And that's where, that's where they're at. I think also for, as far as like summer school, it's been going well. Low attendance, as Dr. Perez mentioned, you know, but it feels good that there are, there are adults, we're in the middle school section, and it's pretty enclosed, but they're waiting there for the students to enter, they're looking out, they're walking the students to the bus stations, even keeping them to the last moment until, making sure that they, that they're reaching or leaving safely. And always in communication, like we're always in communication with the parents, we hear something, you know, different ways of communicating. I think technology is going to be a big one coming up in, in the year. Do the students have hotspots? Do we have enough for them? Because now that you don't have adults working in a family, you know, they're Because now that you don't have adults working in a family, you know, they're going to need, they may not be able to pay that internet, they might need that. We need to see what they're going to need because they're not working or they're working very little. And so they're going to have to gear their money towards the rent, towards the most important thing for them. And as far as the training, I thought about that, too. I feel like we need a lot of training still because we do have, I think, a general sense of the training, but I think it needs to be consistent and it needs to be often, it needs to be real, like real scenarios of what can happen. And also a sensitivity issue, right, empathy, even within the students and the teachers at schools, I think that should be a big one. There's already, you know, I like to talk with the truth, you know, there's already problematic at some of our schools as far as empathy for immigrant students sometimes. We don't have that, even in a regular situation, unfortunately. I think we try hard to, you know, to work with that, but I still see it. And I think we need to work on that at every school to have a little bit more of empathy. Students need to be educated. Students and staff need to be educated. Even sometimes certain things are said by adults that are surprising, and I just wanted to say that. On the other hand, you know, this is a time when I'm more proud to work for POSD because I was talking to Helen the other day. You know, the way we get it together with the fire, with COVID, the way we work together to, you know, through odds and through sometimes complaining and this and that, I feel like, you know, what happened with the fire was like, my God, that was quick, like everybody came together as a community, it was unbelievable to me. Everybody doing their part here and there, you know, not perfect because it was such a horrible situation, but man, it came together. I haven't said that publicly, but I feel like we need to do the same again. We need to come together. As I was driving this weekend around myself, I do the same thing. I'm driving around. I saw, you know, community members gathering together. They had little tents up, you know. If anybody needed any help with anything, it was just a great thing to see. But I do see a lot of things coming to place, but we need to be consistent and not forget about it. Not, you know, okay, it's past. We need to continue what we're doing and maybe, big on training, I would say, I would say, and empathy. That social, emotional, and mental health would go a long way. Thank you.
I was reminded that the students that were attending the Western Justice Association training in the summer were from all different schools. Some of them were high school and some of them were in middle school and they had never met each other in the groups that they were in. And they were practicing different scenarios of empathy and how they would respond to, you know, other students and trying to teach each other how to do points of view. And I know that we'll be launching that in the fall, like they were being trained on how to be peer mediators for one another. So I think that could be really powerful.
Goes a long way. You know, a lot of the families, as I've been speaking to them, they're so grateful. You know, a lot of, when you're an immigrant, I'm an immigrant myself, you know, you do feel isolated. It can be isolating. You do start to think, oh, wow, you know, I don't belong here for real. Maybe I should go back. There's a lot of self, you know, a lot of thinking inward. And just to tell you, I can't even put into words how thankful and grateful. It's not even about the food, it's not even about that, but it's about you care about me. I'm not alone. And, you know, that goes such a long way to say, hey, you aren't alone. We might not be able to do certain things because we need to follow certain protocols or the law or the lack of law. I'm sorry, but it's true. But we can care and we can be, say, hey, we're here for you. This is what we can give and, you know, you're not alone. Thank you.
I do think that is the point of asking all of our community partners to come here, you know, this evening and so that our community does hear, you know, hopefully broadcasted or from others watching by word of mouth, how many people really do care about their safety, their mental health, their basic needs, right, their medical needs. And that we are here for them and maybe how they can get some resources. Because like even this evening, people don't want to come in our building, you know, the people who were delivering the food, they're afraid of the government right now, right? And so I think that we have to remember that at the school site where you all are on the ground, you know, you're much more trusted sources than being removed at the district office. And I just think we're very fortunate to have so many partners in this community that, you know, can hold up our families and support them. I don't know if our student board member wanted to add anything from the student's perspective or if you've had time to talk about this or just give your personal opinion or...
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we had a meeting today. Some of my fellow students, Yul and Lula, were at that meeting. And we were just discussing what that kind of fear of ICE does to a learning environment. We talked a lot about how, like, when you're in a state of fear, it's harder to focus, harder to learn. And I have many friends who are undocumented or with mixed status and I talk to them every day and they're scared. And it's just really great to see you guys like moving to action, like this meeting and having all these different people here. It's really great to see. And from the student's perspective, we're just thankful for this and excited for these trainings and these new programs.
Yeah, I don't know if this was said already. I came in a little late. But yes, I do want to piggyback off of the gratitude expressed. This really wouldn't be possible without Dr. Velasquez's initiative to have this meeting and the whole board supporting that and all of you, all the community, the city, the sites, its leadership, all of you coming together. This really is very special. I have also done patrol with Home Depot. And even just today, I had to get up early, patrol Home Depot. I had a partner who was a counselor at another district and she was saying that they're not doing anything. They're not saying anything, they're not having meetings about it. But I was proud to say that we have, you know, vocally partnered with the city to stand firm and strong to protect our community. We're doing this meeting, we're doing extra trainings. It's very clear that we are very active. And I'm just contrasting with another district that is kind of silent because, yes, people are scared. We may be doing a great job, but they just don't know about it. So don't feel like we're criticizing our sites. There is so much on your shoulders and this means so much that you're here, that you're telling us what's going on and that you're constantly, you know, trying to improve things. So that means so much to our community.
So why don't we start with Yolan? Say the organization you represent and your name, that'd be helpful.
Hello, can you hear me? Yes, okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Yolan Trevino. I'm an immigrant from Guatemala, otherwise known as Guatemala. I came here when I was 16, so I educated here, have a few ABCs after my name. But I would say that my true education came from my community. That's where you learned to be fully human. My community has taught me so much. So I have been the executive director of Pasadena Altona Coalition of Transformative Leaders since 2010. But we have been working with the district for more than 28 years, even before we were a nonprofit. We have been offering parenting education, whether the district funded us or not, because we never do anything in our organization, whether we have a grant or not, we do it because it's needed. So that's how we work. So we're a family strengthening center. We have been a sanctuary for our community. We serve the northwest corridor and anyone that comes through our doors is welcome. But particularly, we work with Latino community because all of our staff is bilingual and we look like the community that we serve. So in terms of what is going on right now, we, on January 9th, we opened our doors to start offering fire relief. And many of you who are here know that it's been nonstop, absolutely relentless service. Just before I came to this meeting, we had a family with three children that were living in their car. We still have this situation, I'm sure you know that. It hasn't ended. It's, so I wanted to say, I'm going to start with good news first because I think it's important to name good news. So in spite of all of the challenges that we have, if there was any intention on any, the administration part to create division, that's not happening. Quite the contrary, because I think that we honed all of our partners and all of that during the fire relief. And I'm proud to say that we have had many calls from far away, the Midwest, and I have no idea how they knew about fire relief and offering support. And it's like, how did you know about that? And they say, well, somebody that went to your organization felt really great about what you're doing and said that we should support you. So, you know, that's amazing. And I think that now that this is happening, we were prepared in some way because we knew we survived this previous administration before and we learned a lot and we started doing workshop, Know Your Rights, ongoing. So we constantly do Know Your Rights and our parents know that. We have shifted into back to Zoom, even though we were happy we're doing in person, you know, after, a few months after the fire, because the safety of our families is paramount to us and the children. So, you know, in terms of the good news is that there's solidarity across the cultural divide, if there was any, because people are calling us and it doesn't matter what their ethnicity is and saying, what can we do? Tell us what to do. How can we support you? So that's really amazing. We, right now, we have been doing deliveries at home. I would say that probably out of the 100% of families that we serve, more than 50% are absolutely terrified to come out. Absolutely terrified. And so we have a network of more than 300 parents that are involved with us. We called every family, say, how are you doing? How can we support you? And we immediately began, and some of you who are here know this, we immediately began going shopping for them, asking them what you need, going shopping for them and sending, delivering the food to them. And, you know, families are very grateful. I think someone said the most amazing feeling they have is someone cares for me. And so we are very careful with who delivers the food. People have to, we need to have, like, not a background check with them, but we need to make sure they're authentic. We take their photograph. A photograph is sent to the family and saying, this is what the person looks like that's going to be delivering your food. And so anyone that has offered, you know, I can do that, I said, well, you have to be subjected to being photographed and we have to know, you know, who you are and who you represent. So you can be too careful these days. But, so we see families every day. I met with several families this morning. Unfortunately, many of our families are going back home. You should know that. They can't take the stress anymore. They can't take, I can't be on the street, my kids can't go out. Many are going back home. They're going back home because they might have a relative. A lot of these kids have never been, like, in their country. They don't know what it's like. Many of our kids don't even speak Spanish. So, you know, it's a very challenging situation. And, you know, like, who am I to say to them, don't go back? What can I offer them? Besides the support that we have been giving them. We have provided hundreds of thousands of dollars in support, cash grants to our families, no questions asked. They just had to show proof that they were in the line of the fire, they're fire survivors. But, you know, money is not enough because you can't change the circumstances. You can't change the fear that they feel. And honestly, truth be told, anyone right now that is supporting, like, what is called the enemy, is on the radar as a nonprofit. You know, fortunately, we don't have any feral funding. I never wanted feral funding because I know the population I work with. So we don't have that fear that, you know, our fund is drying up or I'm on a list. I have actually seen the list of nonprofits that are to be scrutinized. That list already exists, it's been circulated by legal entities. So I'm not going to name who they are and what I've seen, but we've seen that. So I would say that it's important that we work together, that we learn cultural humility because it's not enough to be, have cultural capacity, but cultural humility. Because we don't know who's going to be next on this, really. You know, in this country, there have been many ethnicities that have been through challenges like this. So I would hope that we can continue to count with your support and we're in this together. Our organization is there. I always say, send anyone that needs support, whatever it is. We have food cards, $100 food cards. We're happy to give that to people. We're happy, we're paying utility bills right now for people. People are not going to have any money to pay the rent. What's going to happen then? People right now don't have the money to pay utilities. I mean, I don't know, and Vanya, you're here and, you know, it's not your fault, but the city is charging, they're charging people for water and light and they were not even living there. What in the world? I mean, we're trying to help people navigate. They just returned a month ago to their home and they have a $1,000 water bill. Like, what? So there's... Believe me, tomorrow, we're on the phone with you. Because, you know, like, we're limited to what we can do. We can't... What we're doing, honestly, is only sustainable because of people from outside of Pasadena who are supporting us. So let's keep trying. I mean, I don't know, I'm here for any questions if anyone has anything else, but I don't want to hug the mic, but thank you for the opportunity to share.
So very quickly, I'm very grateful that everybody's here. We are all very grateful. And I don't want to speak for anybody, but for myself, I'll say that it is very important that at a time where people are being pushed to invisibility, we reclaim that space and have a conversation about what we do and how we care. And that is really important and very valuable, more than now, more than ever, right? But understanding that we have a critical difficulty right now is that we can't talk to the people that need our help, right? So I am very grateful for what we've done and I am very hopeful that we can hear from you what are the things that we're missing. Because the people that we're missing may not be necessarily in a position to come out and say, this is what I need. So in many ways, we have to rely on the common understanding of this group and everybody else in our communities to help us inform policy and movement, et cetera, to address those aspects where we haven't seen. So thank you so much. And in your comments, I'm hopeful and finding incredible value in those interventions. in those interventions.
Yes, sure.
Yeah, just the challenge right now of parents and sending the kids to summer programs. So many of the parents decided we're not gonna send them. And some of them are making a heroic effort, but they're shaking in their car while they're dropping the kids off, and they're shaking in their car while they're picking them up. I don't know what can be done about that besides carpooling. I'm not sure. But, you know, the, the kids can't be at home, isolated all this time. Many of the homes don't have air conditioning. You know, it's, it's hot, and they're, like, crowded. There are three or four families living in very small spaces. So, you know, I think everyone around here is pretty brilliant, and we can put our heads together and see what ideas do we have to support the families? Because they believe in education. They want the kids to go to school. We're sending them our kits and books and things like that, but that's not enough. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Kristi Zamani. I'm the Executive Director for Day One, and I'm also the Chair for Partnership for Children, Youth, and Families. That represents about 50 different nonprofits in our community that has been convening weekly. We did it during COVID, we're doing it now. We did it during the fires. So I think in addition to everything Yolanda, I mean, Yolanda was, I think, is the strongest spokesperson for this and who we lead, who's been the voice even in the partnership to tell us what's going on. But I'll tell you, as far as summer programs, to just start there, I just really wanna, I don't do this a lot, but like, just congratulations to the district, because I think we were very well informed and prepared. So I think the level of training we received and the communication to even troubleshoot, as things were not perfect, as nothing is when we start, this is new. But to know that we are all in this together and coming together to say, how do we fix this? How do we do better? How are we gonna go about it? Has been excellent, honestly. Now, at Skills, we had about 110 students registered. We got about 52 showing up. That's half, that never happens. We've conducted one-on-one phone calls, old school, because that's how is the best way to connect with families right now. Those who, we wanted to make sure, like, if you're scared to come, can we go virtual for you? And some are not even comfortable enough to share that, that's the truth. It's a very scary climate. So I'll share, like, again, the phone calls are good. Thanks to Chirla, Rosanna will speak in a second. Wonderful one-on-one, like, just like the intense training around Know Your Rights, but with scenarios and really great life examples. We included it as part of the orientations for Skills parents. We just made it an option. After a one-hour orientation, 50 of those parents did not get off the phone and stayed on. And I'll tell you, the most beautiful moment on that call was in the chat, parents supporting each other, saying, we stand with you, we're here for you. And I was like, wow, like, if, if we've ever had to be united, this is the moment. And to see community doing that is the most beautiful thing. We've distributed Know Your Rights cards. And I think that weekly call that we've all been jumping on in the mornings on Wednesdays really gives us a chance to listen, learn, and troubleshoot, like, identify those gaps in resources and how can we do better? That's our constant question. Fears, same as Yolanda, they're scared of leaving, leaving home. I, I had to go cry in a corner yesterday as I was listening to this little, or I don't know, sorry, Thursday, this little boy. One of our staff was like, how was your weekend? And he goes, oh, we didn't do anything. It was just, my family's too scared to go out. And it was such a small comment, you know, but it just hit so hard. I was like, damn, like, this can't be it, right? This can't be it, and this is summer. So, like, again, fears of driving, so as we're thinking of summer program, we're thinking transportation. Like, how do we take something off of the parents' shoulders? Because, again, you can't keep the kids the whole time. They, the parents probably need a break, the kids need a break. They can't open their doors. So we're thinking about how do we keep their homes cool and keep them comfortable, and they're scared to go to work. So those economic challenges. You brought up the question of what do, what do we need moving forward? And, again, transportation is at the top of the list. This summer, a lot of the kids didn't get Chromebooks because they're being upgraded. So, again, and we know where there's one Chromebook per house. Honestly, we're back to COVID, guys. Like, families don't have computers at home, a lot of our families. So the computer and Wi-Fi are, like, the hotspots are at the top of the list. We need COVID-type support, again, back to delivering kits and activities and Zoom stuff. The virtual education option is gonna be a must, economic support. And I'll just say, play has never been more important. The other day, we scratched programming, and we just let the kids play, because they hadn't played all weekend, and we were like, the gates are locked, it's safe, play. We're gonna do, bring out the balls and let's go. And you can't imagine how happy they were just to let out some steam and some energy. So I think as we look forward to the school year, thinking about, again, those crucial elements around mental health, how do you create friendships? Because our students still struggle with that after the pandemic. How do we have play? Facilitated play, safe play. And yeah, so, but all in all, thank you all for being good partners. I think we just can't be against each other. We all really gotta get along right now.
Good evening, I'm Rosanna Del Rio. I am a community member, but also a staff at Chirla, which is the Coalition for Humane Immigrant Rights. I am a PUSD alum and happy to say I'm an alum from Madison Elementary School. My family still, and myself, still live right in front. And on the incident that took place about a week and a half ago, it was beautiful, very, very beautiful to come out and see the staff outside passing out Know Your Rights or just talking to the community that was just walking. It has been the most beautiful thing to see, as well as just leaving for work or coming back from work. I am in the LA office, but coming back into, into the city, you still see Neighborhood Patrol, and it's probably the safest I have ever felt, just seeing the community out there. Through Chirla, we, when the fires took place, Chirla, along with PACTA, was another agency that helped out our vulnerable community, our immigrant community. And that included financial support in terms of some food cards, as well as helping in any extra way that we could, specifically for families that were not able to apply at the time for FEMA or Red Cross support. And when all, when all of this started taking place, at, so far, right now, we've been doing a lot of Know Your Rights with community partners and agencies, like with Day One, and just in general with the community surrounding ourselves, like our family. I think one of the biggest things I'd like to mention, and that Angelica, our Executive Director, who is also a Pasadena resident herself, she says this. This, her being in the agency for almost 40-plus years, this is the scariest. This is the real, most real immigration enforcement that she has seen and that, in my years working at Chirla and working as a community organizer and a community advocate, I have seen also. So keeping that in mind and, and trying to understand and put ourselves, right? Empathy is putting yourselves in, in the person's shoes. When you put yourself in their shoes, what do, what does the community really need? And what are they searching for? And so, right now, we're in a, in a somewhat of a good soft spot because it's summer. And so it's, it's, seems really easy to talk about a lot of these, whether it's carpool to summer programs or making some things available online for these students. The reality is, is this is gonna continue. This is very much gonna continue into the school year. So as we're thinking, we need to think longer term. We really need to think, how are we gonna support these families and these students within the school year? And I know there was a talk about doing, like, online accommodations and then having the students go into for Center for Independent Study. And I think that's beautiful, and at the same time, I want to also just emphasize, sometimes that's where we lose students. That's a lot of the time that is where we lose our beautiful BIPOC students. Because sometimes they don't have all of the support. Sometimes even within their own household, we don't have the support that educational, yes, continue, keep going to school, right? So I want us to keep that in mind. That is the biggest thing that, at this time, I can tell you, this isn't just a summer thing. This isn't just next month and it ends. This is a lot more longer term. And like many of us have seen, feel, and are starting to understand that right now it might be more so our Latino communities being targeted, but we know that that is expanding, that that is very much gonna go into the other communities. I do want to say, PUSD is doing an amazing job compared to other districts, very much compared to other districts. This conversation is taking place, and I don't think it's actually taking place in other districts. There's principals here who are sharing exactly their plan and their policies and their procedures. And I know that in other school districts, that hasn't even happened. There's, there's definitely families that don't know who to go to, who to talk to. And so I want to praise you in that, but also still understand that that's just one layer. That's, that's very much just one layer. One of the biggest portions of the Know Your Rights that we do is creating a family plan. So thank you for, for adding that in. And I think that's, every single school should, and, and agency should very much understand what is creating a family plan and how it can be used, whether it's in these raids, whether it's another natural disaster, whatever it is, right? And, and even understanding protocol and policies within your own school, within your own agency, even wherever, wherever else we go into the community, knowing that there's somebody, like a pinpoint person, that, somebody from a school, they know, a parent knows exactly where to go to, who to talk to. This is a community, that currently the community that be, that is being targeted is a community that is very used to being in the shadows, as we say. We're very, very used to being in the shadows. And so how do you move? And how do you connect with people that are already used to just being down, you know, under the radar? It does take a lot of, we're gonna say grassroots organizing. It does take a lot of touch points. A phone call helps out substantially. Whether it's the teacher from the student's class that's calling them, whether it's the principal herself or themselves that are doing these calls, it really helps to create that connection. If you really think about it, most of these families just go drop off their kids, and then, and then they come and pick them up. They don't necessarily engage too much with even a school staff. And just keeping that in mind already, I would hope that it creates an understanding that it's gonna take, no matter what, it's gonna take a little bit more to know the families that are fully, fully being affected by this. Let me just, I'm gonna look at my notes. Yeah, one of the biggest things was the longer-term, longer-term plan. The, this conversation already itself, like I said, it's very amazing that it's taking place. But what more can be done into the school year? And I, I, if we put into play the family plan, so we put into play Know Your Rights and letting our community members and our family members know, that is already helping out so, so much with protecting a lot of our families and a lot of our community members. But it's the educational aspect, it's the financial, economic aspect that right now is gonna start hitting even harder when the school year starts, but also the parents not being able to work, right? And I wish I can give you something a little bit more tangible in terms of what you can actually do, but that's also might be something for me to take back to the agency and take a larger conversation with the partners here of longer term, how do we make, not necessarily, wouldn't wanna say, go back to COVID teaching, because even at that, COVID in our mind was something that was just gonna be temporary, right? We didn't think about it in a longer term. But I feel like COVID and the fire is something that kinda gives us this ability to be able to plan out anything else that comes at us. And in this case, the raids currently, right? This political climate that we find ourselves in, that is this next branch that's coming out of it. And we don't want it to grow anymore, but it potentially can. We're only halfway through this first year, you know, this first, first term year. And so it's, we wanna just be ready for these things. So maybe larger, you know, a further conversation later on of what's actually tangible. Please feel free to ask me any questions also. And like I said, you'll find me in the community in different spaces. But yeah, today, I am giving a little bit more insight in terms of the work that Chirla has been doing and continues to do. Thank you all for your support also, because we are very much one of those agencies that's pretty heavily targeted right now.
Would Pastor Myra?
Hi, thanks for bringing these amazing people together to talk about what's available in the community. Pastor Myra Masada Nolan with the Clergy Community Coalition. This is a lot, on top of all of the work that all of these agencies and organizations have been doing since January 7th. This is, it's an indescribable layer on top of everything else. We've run out of words to describe how people feel, what the reality is, and it almost seems like a waste of time, but it's important to acknowledge that that's where we are. In the, in the beginning, around February, the Governor's Office asked the CCC to bring together some of our Spanish-speaking congregation leaders, because they wanted to hear about the impacts, how the fire was specifically impacting Spanish-speaking congregations. And so we, we gathered a group of about 12 of them. And during that conversation was the first time that we, we actually just talked about it like this. We said, we have been preparing for the firestorm that was coming in January for immigrant families in this community. And then we got a literal fire on top of that. And so we were calling it Los Incendios, the two fires that were the intersection for, for immigrant families in this community. And, and we've been, we've been, the Clergy Community Coalition has just been thinking about how we support families that are connected to churches, because the majority of people in this community go to church somewhere. So one of the things that we did early in the year is we, we stood up a migrant solidarity committee, where we wanted to actually give focus to how we would go about encouraging and equipping local faith communities to support and protect our neighbors in these ways. Faith communities are a third space, so, you know, your home, your work, and then, for a lot of people, their churches are number three place where they connect and they experience community. And so we knew that the churches could play a vital role in this area. So we started talking about what, what things we can do. And so we've started to provide training. So a couple of weeks ago, we did a training for faith leaders about, you know, how do we think about, how can you be thinking about how to protect people when they're actually in church? Because we know what happened to those protections that existed, they are no longer there. Churches are no longer sensitive, considered a sensitive location, but what can we do? And even though we're doing that, we're doing it fully understanding that it could not even matter when we're talking about Know Your Rights for, for families, Know Your Rights for businesses, Know Your Rights for faith communities, it could really not even matter, because we're seeing the violation of rights happening every single day. But we're, we're trying to stay faithful and just continue to at least give people some information that could be helpful. This past Saturday, we had a migrant solidarity summit. We thought about canceling it because of the risk, not only for, you know, organizationally for us to be that public with it, but also for the people who would come to that. So we had to change everything around and have a really good security plan in place. We had about 130 people attend. So we had to change everything around and have a really good security plan in place. We had about 130 people attend. About 70 of those people were faith leaders and folks in the community that were part of congregations. And then the rest were actual neighbors who actually went there to learn about what they needed to do to protect their families. It was a half-day, a half-day thing, but we talked about, you know, knowing your rights as an ally, knowing your rights as a family that's impacted. But also, you know, what the reality of the visas that actually are available still. And then helping folks understand the history and for faith communities, the theology behind why this is actually a thing that, you know, faith communities need to be paying attention to. And the history was really important because it really is going to take, all of us is going to take every segment of our community to protect one another, and some folks just don't understand the history, period. Or the US's role in interventions in especially the Northern Triangle that has caused a lot of migrations. And so those are the kinds of things that actually change people's minds and where people are able to get over the us versus them, the stealing of jobs, those kinds of things. And so we need, we need, we need the black pastors. We need the white-led churches. We need all of them to protect us right now. So that's what we've been doing. We've been also just encouraging congregations and faith leaders to be active in immediate response. So almost every time something has happened in this community, we've shown up as soon as we found out. And usually that's very soon, within, sometimes within minutes. So presence, we've been trying to organize ourselves to provide income replacement. That's a little bit slow, but I think it's something that we're going to really need to figure out as a community. Because as was stated by some of the other leaders here, this is going to be a long road, just like the fire recovery is going to be a long road. It's not going to end anytime soon. And then accompaniment of people, you know, going and doing home visits. A lot of clergy are actually going and visiting folks in their congregations and checking in to see how they're doing. I was a pastor at a local church for 20 years now. I run this coalition, so I don't have like a congregation anymore, but I know a lot of families in the neighborhood and I am doing visits and actually talking about what are you going to do if somebody comes to your door, write down this phone number, let's practice. So there's a lot of pastors in the community that are doing similarly. And then I just want to say that we need to be doing things, but we also need to talk about things, because the community needs to know who is supporting them. So it's actions, but it's also saying it, you know, and I know that that comes at great risk to organizations, to individual people, to school districts, but it is important to say, this is where we stand and we're with you. And the, I guess there were so many things that were already mentioned, but as I said, the income replacement is going to be a long haul. Transportation was already mentioned by Yoland, which is something that we're going to need to wrap our minds and collaborate around, because it has to, it has to happen. We have to figure out how to get kids to school. And because we saw what happened in COVID, my kid was one of the kids. He was a freshman at John Muir when the pandemic started, and he was a great student. He did so well. And then he completely was in the gutter, because he needed that structure. And like I had to like pick him up literally from the bathroom floor sobbing, because he could not get himself together to actually focus and get his work done. And so the mental health implications for children right now, I mean, it's always been this way. It's been this way for a long time. This isn't new. Like our kids in homes that are at risk, where one parent or any family member is at risk of deportation have always suffered, because it could happen any day. Now it's just more of a reality that it can happen today, you know, right now. So, but thinking about the, how we support children's mental health is going to be really important. And their families as well, because if you're watching your mom cry all day long, that messes with you. And then the other thing that a couple of people have mentioned, the family emergency plans. I think that the, that the school district is probably in a really good place to, I know that you, you don't ask, you know, people's status, but you have the connection with the most number of families to try to figure out how you maybe help us overlay a plan for our community to make sure there's really no reason why every family that needs one doesn't have an emergency plan. There's enough of us, just like every, every household needed to do a right-of-entry. Like we have lists, right? We know who needs to do it. There's no reason that, that every family shouldn't have this. However, there's also like, like kind of conflicting information out there about what actually is valid. Just like we talked about the notarios, like don't go to them. Well, it's also like what actual document is going to give families the most protection so that their kids are okay and so the parents don't lose their rights. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pastor Myra. Ms. Vanya, would you like to add?
Good evening. My name is Vanya de la Cuba. I am the deputy to the mayor here in the city of Pasadena. I'm also an immigrant from Lima, Peru. I came to Pasadena when I was five years old. First landed at Jefferson Elementary, not speaking a word of English, and then at Madison Elementary, which is actually where Mayor Gordo and I met when he was nine and I was 10. So we've known each other a very long time. Prior to being in the mayor's office, actually I worked at Chirla from 1990 to 1994. And when we went through the uprisings and we saw at that time INS conducting their raids and the sweeps that they were doing, it was very different. It was a very, Angelica is absolutely right. The terror that is being inflicted on our community by immigration agents is unlike anything that we have ever seen. Prior to that, I've always worked in, in the community. I lived in the coalition at Nonviolent City. And then when the mayor was a city council member, starting in 2001, and I was his field representative. So District 5, I've been on the ground and met a lot of neighbors and worked really closely with a lot of neighbors. And we have taken those connections with us into the mayor's office. And so when this started, well, when the fire started, we were definitely working with folks. But when this started, it was not only heartbreaking and traumatic to see what was happening in our neighborhoods, but it was very personal. It felt very, very personal, because both Victor and I were there. We know how this feels. We know what it, what our parents told us, shouldn't they not come home from work? What we were supposed to do? Who were we supposed to see? What were we supposed, where were we supposed to go? So that's been challenging. But my role right now as deputy has been really, I've kind of split it a little bit, because my heart is with Madison. That's really, it's my school. It's where the connections are when we see the students and when I'm there, I see that, that's my hallway. That's my classroom and that's where I went. So there is a lot of connection with Dr. Bedes and the team there and the students. And yes, I patrol the neighborhood. Yes, I park down the street and watch. Yes, I go around the block. I check in. But we have a very strong partnership, not just our office, but also creating a partnership with our city departments, the library, our police department, our fire department, so that there is connection with community and so that community feels safe with all of the parts of the city. Beyond that, it is, I do see our work is really to connect with our community partners. So all of our partners here are doing some amazing work. Chirla Day One, the partnership CCC collaborate. We're here to support and to provide a connection to city services, city departments, city programs, to be here and to listen from community on the ground and to be accessible. Señora Artis calls me at six in the morning that she sees two vans out there, so I'm off to go figure out those vans. But also when Yoland calls, and now we'll figure out the water and power, I promise. Or Kristi, we're here to address those kinds of things and be helpful. Our Villa Park Community Center is also a really important space for our Latino community and our immigrant community. It is a safe space. It has been a safe space. And so working to make sure that it remains accessible, that we can create a space where families and kids and seniors in particular feel safe to come. We had to cancel our, we met with the soccer league. The youth soccer league has 1,800 kids that play in it. The Thursday before the Saturday raid of the, at the pushcart vendor with the tamales, we had met with the 40-league coaches, and it was a really emotional meeting, because they wanted to continue to play, but they couldn't continue to play. It was not going to be safe and the families didn't feel safe. And so after a lot of conversation and trying to figure out what can we do to create some safe space, could we reach out to our private schools so that we can find spaces where our kids can play, where we could actually lock the gates and things like that? They decided that the best thing was to do was to cancel. And we're going to look to see if we can do the final championship, final weekend on July the 12th. And so we've reached out to our private school partners, our colleges, PCC and Caltech, to see if we can provide those safe spaces. Thank God we canceled the league, because that Saturday morning, there would have been 100 kids out there. There would have been the referees out there. There would have been the families out there. And those ICE agents knew what they were looking for, because they kept circling and circling and circling that morning, after they had taken the first ride. So trying to meet community and community need wherever it's at. It's summertime and our kids deserve to be able to play and to be kids and to enjoy summer. And so we're trying to find ways of creating those safe spaces at our community centers. We're trying to figure out how we can address the transportation issue. Can we use our arts, passing of transit buses? Can we use our dial-a-ride? What can we do in partnership to address those things? The other thing that has been critical and a role that our office has been playing and the mayor has been very outspoken about it is the issue with police and the concerns that people have in the community about police being complicit or collaborating with ICE. And I, and we had the, on Saturday, I think was probably one of the more outwardly visible interactions there. What was, what was happening, and the family member from Señora Vargas was able to ask somebody else to make the call, and our police did arrive. Once they, they verified that those agents were in fact ICE agents, there is no more that we can do. Legally, a local law enforcement agency, a local police agency cannot engage and cannot interfere with a federal immigration activity. And it's heartbreaking to say that. And I think that there's a lot of confusion and there's a lot of concern from community members who are saying, but you're watching a kidnapping. But once we have identified that those folks are in fact federal law enforcement officers, we have to step back. And so trying to, one of our roles has been to try to also address rumors, to spell issues, confirm things where we can, understand things, create connections. Last week, our chief of police, the mayor, city manager, myself, and a couple of our, was there? No, Andy Lone was there, Cal was there, met with the residents, about 150 of them in the 500 block of Marengo, three apartment buildings, to answer their questions, to let them know what the process is or what happens. And, you know, when they have a concern that they can call and they should call. But it is hard, because I know that everybody wants to see that, okay, you've identified, now stop it. Stop it. And we can't stop it. The other thing that we're working on with that, having met with those folks is, there are a lot of little ones in there. So we're trying to figure out how can we bring our library services to do, you know, storytime for the little ones, bring in the armory to do things there where they're feeling safe, so that there's some activity and some education. So we're trying to meet the need. We're trying to identify, work with our partners, listen to what the concerns are, listen to what the issues are, and try to respond as best as we can. I think that's kind of where our role has been. I would say to you that, the city council has been unanimous in their support to support our immigrant community and to find ways and to find the way to yes, and to find the way of being creative and to get to what we need to get to, so that community feels safe, so that our kids feel safe, and so that they're able to learn and enjoy summer and be with our community.
Thank you for that, Vanya. Dr. Velazquez, would you like to say something?
I have some questions for Vanya. Okay, so we've been receiving, or I've been receiving some questions from the community, and they're various. One is, there is a lot of parents in houses with little children that don't feel like they have a place where they can take their children to play. So if you're not in a formal summer program, there's no place to go and take your kids to play, right? Is the city thinking about this issue? That's my question.
Sure.
I don't need to know what the solution is. I just need to know that you're thinking about it.
Oh, yes. And so, for example, and we are even talking about the littlest ones. We have an early childhood education task force that the mayor started about three years now, which is part of our Office of the Young Child. So we're working with exactly that issue, because we've seen the drop at Head Start. We've seen the drop in our different programs, and including with our family-based, our daycare providers, right? So how do we create those safe spaces?
And how to communicate that to the people. Okay. Second question. It has to do with, I know a lot of people are very fearful of what happens after, where people are taken. Does the Pasadena police have information about where people are taken?
We are not provided any information. Historically, when there used to be these kinds of raids or sweeps, there would be a call that would come into the police department and there's a term for it. In law enforcement, they're clearing or they're cross-checking. So when one agency comes into another agency's jurisdiction, they let you know, we're coming into your jurisdiction. They may not necessarily say what they're doing there, but they're letting you know that they are there. That's not happening with ICE at all. There is no communication. Our chief has called on a daily basis to try to connect with them to say, hey, the disruption that is happening in our community is massive, as it is everywhere else, but no response. The chief has now sent a formal letter to ICE, the regional director. I don't believe we've received a response as of yet, so we don't know. We do know from the way that the system works is that once a person is taken, they go to B-18. And at Metropolitan Detention Center, and they are processed there. Whether they stay there, how long they stay there, we don't know. Whether they, the pattern that seems to be developing in our center right now is what we're seeing is, if you're arrested in LA, you're taken to B-18 for the initial processing and then moved out to Texas. The cruelty of what is happening is unparalleled. So that's as much as we know. We do have, and at the city, we've also printed thousands of red cards. We carry them. All of our reps are carrying them, handing them out. When I talk to families, when they call, I'm giving them, I'll role-play. You know, so we go through it, because, and it sounds funny, but it's like you got to practice it. You got to practice it. I carry my passport. Victor carries his passport, you know, because we know that we don't look any different than anybody else. So unfortunately, even the police department does not have information about where, what happens when somebody is arrested and detained.
In the case that ICE decides to arrest somebody near or in, around schools, specifically minors, is there a way that Pasadena police can assist in confirming with schools or with adults for that particular minor?
Well, there's no communication from ICE right now to the police department. So if we have, you know, if a resident or if somebody sees that a minor is taken and they can notify the PD or notify us, we can try, certainly notify the school, notify the district. But there is, they have not allowed us any way to confirm, any way to anything. We're really relying on what people are seeing when, when the activity is taking place. The incident that happened on Saturday, I think we probably had more information, because we were able to get there. There was a sort of a delay in time, but that's not always the case at all, unfortunately. So, yeah. ICE is not, they're not operating in any way that we've ever known before.
Thank you, because people need to hear the answers.
Thank you, Vanya. Gee?
Hey, everybody. Gee Albert?
Yes, go ahead.
Those are really good questions and answers. On the topic of identifying federal agents to be actual federal agents, and I sent this email kind of late to Dr. Blanco today. There's a proposed bill in the California Senate, proposed by Senator Sasha Rene Perez, SB 805.
proposed by Senator Sasha Rene Perez, SB 805, No Vigilantes Act, which is great because it's, it's hoping to apply requirement that ICE needs to unmask so that we can accurately identify these are indeed federal agents. And so I understand that, you know, the chief of police said that that's actually one of their tasks is to verify these are indeed federal agents. So I'm just kind of putting this out there. I don't know if you, your legal team has kind of looked at that bill, but this is, could be an opportunity for us to, you know, kind of apply additional protocol step where we do get to verify ICE and they have to, you know, unmask versus, you know, like was it Huntington Park where there was just imposter federal agents using, you know, this kind of situation right now? And that is a safety issue, you know? They couldn't maybe not be federal agents and not be legitimate missions. So that's something we can kind of, you know, hope for and maybe plan for in, in the event that we do pass this bill.
Yes, absolutely. And I think when folks call and they're seeing something, the activity that's going on, it's a suspicious circumstance, we're not sure if they're being kidnapped, we don't know what's going on, our officers will come out and they do verify. But once they verify, there's not much that we can do. But at, at the very least, you know, you know that it's a federal agent. I know that mayor was there when the press conference was held announcing the bill, SB 805. And certainly we support that. Our, you know, our city manager used to be a judge and we have a lot of lawyers on the team. And definitely taking a look at that bill and knowing that while in the state of California currently, law enforcement is required to not be masked, show their face and have their ID present, right? That applies to local and state law enforcement, does not apply to federal. So the thinking at this point is if the bill does pass and, and it should and it goes into effect, that the federal government will likely challenge that legally. But, you know, so that's why we're, the part about call the PD if you see something so that we can verify. I think there was another call on Sunday about somebody on Marengo and our officers were able to verify that was another law enforcement agency. But it's, but I know that it's frustrating in the community. We can go out there, we can verify, but then we can't do anything and folks get really, really upset. And so we understand the frustration and the anger that folks feel that we can't stop it. But I think our folks can move beyond, they do move beyond that so that we know that, look, it is law enforcement. We know that's for sure. It's not a vigilante, it's not, you know, the guy from Huntington Park or the three other men that were in other parts of the country that did horrible things dressed as, you know, false agents, so, yeah.
G? Okay, JP.
Can you hear me? From a student perspective, if we see people that are suspected to be ICE agents or in an area, what is the best course of action to take? Like when identifying them or, or, yeah.
So that's kind of really broad because, and I'm not, you can see them across the way, you can do a couple of things. If you just see them down the street, but you don't see them engaged in anything, the rapid response network is the best place to call because that response network will go out there. They have volunteers that will confirm that, you know, that's an ICE agent, there's activity going on there. For us, when you would call the police department to let us know, hey, it's when you're seeing activity that you're not, this, this does not look right. I can't tell that that's a police, you know, a law enforcement officer, they're trying to grab somebody, something doesn't look right and you're concerned about it, call the PD. But if you just see somebody that you think is a particular thing, then I would recommend the rapid response network. It's a really great network and Rosanna can talk a little bit about that.
So just go ahead and so that it's on record. Chirla has a rapid response hotline. We have an assistance line. So if you were to see anything that happens, the number that you would call is 888-624-4752. Not do that one more time. And whenever anybody calls to let us know of any type of ICE activity or detain, detention that's, that's taking place, once we hear the call, and we're doing this in real time, either it's being picked up or we're listening to the voicemail, it automatically gets sent to what is the rapid response network. And so there is a network of folks, I would, I would have said LA County, but at this point all throughout California. Chirla is definitely helping out with the LA County Rapid Response. And once we hear, it goes into these messages that get sent into specifically the city. So if it's something that you're seeing happening in the city of Whittier, it's going to get sent to, a message is going to send, Signal is the app that we're using and it gets sent there. And there is definitely way over more than 200 folks at this point in the rapid response network. And these are folks that are willing and open and able to, if they see a message, they will themselves go and check and see what's happening. They have been trained or we've been trained and we vet people. So we won't just let anybody into, into the group. We make sure that you know somebody that you've also gone to the training. There is a training next Wednesday if that is of interest to anybody also. I can give that personally to you if that's something that you'd like.
Thank you so much, that's really informative.
G?
Hi, everybody. G, Collaborate Pasadena, really great to be here with so many partners that I work with regularly and unfortunately for the reason we're here, I don't have to about that. Just to follow up, if you do call the hotline, be as detailed as possible. Really helps responders know what they're looking for, make and model the car, how many people you see, what they're doing. So that really helps response. I'm not speaking from experience or anything. So that said, you know, and as Fania said, you know, people are being shipped off to Texas, so it really just shows that due process is out the window, that, that there is no due process anymore. And that federal judges have been arrested for obstruction of justice. And, and so I'm really hesitant about going into any details here because what could be obstruction of justice could be considered conspiracy at some point, just for helping people understand their constitutional rights. Collaborate does not do direct services to children, youth or families. We're a very small team. We have a couple other part-time employees. But really we're coordinators. We try to coordinate with partners in the room, partners that are not in the room. And as we did with COVID, really trying to, we learned a lot from COVID. Worked a lot with Yolan's team on delivering meals during the entire length of COVID. We did like 87,000 meals thanks to the donation of all the food from PUSD. Truly trying to learn from that and really seeing how we can support organizations with all the way from food delivery to helping setting up these community information centers that you see the tents on the corner, staff those, provide training and then also with rapid response, which, one of the really important efforts of rapid response is to dispel rumors because there's so, the anxiety in the, in the neighborhoods are so high. So just knowing that somebody can call somebody and be, and know that, that Ford truck that's sitting out front belongs to somebody that lives around the corner or it's suspect. But just knowing, helping people have agency over watching their own neighborhood is really important. And then also, you know, with rapid response, it's bear witness when somebody is kidnapped and to provide support for those that are left behind. And so these are things that we're working with different organizations. I won't mention any of them by name just because some have asked specifically not to be included in anything that might be made public. And what we're trying to do is learn from as many partners as possible, what they're doing. And so we can help spread that to other organizations that, a church, an organization, another organization that may want to start doing food delivery to their community, help provide them with, there are no best practices, but better practices and learn, so we can help learn from each other and coordinate. One thing I know is, I, I hear there's a lot of, and Scott's mentioned, that people calling up wanting to volunteer, wanting to deliver food. My response is if they find an organization that will let them walk in and deliver food, that's not an organization you want to work with. And really, there's, unfortunately, this is not COVID. We really need to make sure that the people that are, are, have any contact with families are known. And so, you know, if there's anybody out in the public that wants to volunteer, go to your church, go to an organization that knows you and convince them to get involved. In that way, there is an internal vetting process because anybody that shows up in the last, that you haven't known since two months ago, they're suspect. And, and it's, you're not just putting your organization at risk, you're also putting your, you know, most importantly, you're putting the families at risk. And it's really unfortunate that we have to be so decentralized right now because nobody, unlike COVID, I had, it was encrypted, but I had a spreadsheet with every family we're delivering to. We can't have that anymore. And so helping other organizations learn how to have encrypted spreadsheets, how to, we haven't, we've developed before the latest, the rounds of kidnappings, but we really spent a lot of time with internal policy and looking at how we're storing information, how we're sharing information, what, you know, we, there's some information we shouldn't share with elected officials because that may be subject to Public Records Acts. And so in doing that, we now want to share that with our partners so they can learn from that. And so we can learn together on how to keep the people we're serving safe and how do we, how do we keep ourselves safe? Because we just can't afford to lose anybody in this, in this, what we're doing right now. As far as, you know, you would ask what, what PUSD can do? I would, there's a vigil going on right now. I don't know if it's still going on right now, but it's for the, the latest kidnapping on Saturday. Show up to those vigils, be seen, be seen by the community, be, become part of the community. I know the schools are part of the community, but really the individual faces, those who are leaders at the schools should be seen by the community. And so everybody, not just the parents there, but everybody knows who you are. That really does mean a lot. And I know you just, the next one is financial, not necess, I know you just passed your budget, your interim budget. Not asking for funding directly, but really, I mean, our part, everybody here is spending a lot, lot of extra money going out buying groceries, increasing protocols. And these are same organizations that may be at risk of losing their federal funding. Some have already lost federal funding. And so helping us identify sources of funding, donations, if you have contracts with us, renew those. Because that goes a really long way to keep us doing what we're doing right now. And I guess that's about all I have. Any questions?
Scott?
I thank you, thank you for touching on one of the biggest problems that I've sort of run across is the decentralization piece because I think we're used to as a community of, you know, mobilizing support on a grand scale, you know, maintaining websites, plenty of communication, transparency, those types of values. And in this case, those things literally work against us in some cases to, to, to make sure that the folks that have ill intent aren't, you know, do, aren't, aren't trying to get ahead of us. And so I think that, you know, when we, when we think about, when we think about evaluating effectiveness of some of the things we're doing and then pivoting because either they're not working or we're not reaching enough people, and this is maybe a question for everyone, is how, how do we diagnose that? And how do we pivot? And I think the district has been talking about weekly meetings and doing things internally that happen on a regular cadence with principals and staff. So I think on the district side, pivoting may be easier to do internally. But, but I think in your situation and all of you who are community partners, how do we, how do we remain flexible and agile in this situation? It's a, COVID was a similar model, but we were able to be very vocal with each other and share information. So that's my question.
Is there anybody else?
As far as pivoting, I, I do think that is one of the, the strength of Collaborate because we do have a trusted dialogue with so many of the partners and with this district. I know when we sent out our latest newsletter, I've got a copy here, it was on our position on ICE and how it's destroying our community, that Dr. Blanco had reached out and asked how the district can partner with us in serving our, our community. So I do think we have, hold a role where we can be a conduit to keep partners safe, keep the district safe because there are just a lot of things the district is not able to do that our partners can do. And try to navigate that so that the, the, the district stays safe and within the letter of the law and, and in a position that it needs to be to be able to keep its, not just its students, but its staff and its teachers safe. And then also working with our partners to see how we can work together.
Thank you so much, everyone, and it's been great to hear all of the work and the insights.
Did we miss one of our partners before we?
Yeah, my name is Michael O'Conne and I'm with Collaborate Pasadena. So I'm just here to support G. We are a small team.
Ms. Kenny?
Thank you so much. As I've been learning other things, I had come across some information that I wanted to share. And one of them was from the teacher perspective, making sure teachers really understand what they can do, what they can't do, how to work with families because they're often the people who are the closest to families, you know, perhaps the community assistant as well. So I, I saw on the PowerPoint, I wasn't sure if individual teachers had been given training and it might not need to be to the extent where they're, you know, reviewing whether it's a judicial warrant or an administrative warrant. But they should know, you know, can they hand out the know your rights cards? You know, what, what role could a teacher, should a teacher play? And I don't know if we have the intent to do some training like that. But the, the information I was getting was that teachers sometimes feel that they don't have enough information, not, not in our district, but this is just a general, so that's just kind of a general comment. The other thing that I heard about is as families are impacted, either because they can't afford rent and they have to start doubling up or because family members are leaving and families have to move in together, all of these things. I wonder if the district can maybe redirect some of our Title I funds. I know we put a certain amount aside for homeless and I, I think the federal definition under McKinney-Vento is doubling up. And so that just might be an area where we already have some funding and we might be able to shift a little bit and, and make sure that our teachers and other people who are dealing directly with families who can kind of see that there are changes happening, know then how to connect them with the right resources at the schools. One of the things that was in an EdSource article was it had resources for online therapy, which I know for mental health, I know we have that on our website, but I didn't see it on this page. It is dependent on having a device and internet, but it's still another, I want to make sure that all of our mental health options are available and easy to find. And then, you know, I don't know if it's possible for our Pasadena Educational Foundation to act as a holder of a centralized donation fund, not the same way they're doing the FIRE Fund where they're the ones distributing it. But as I'm hearing kind of from community partners, it could be a place for the general community to donate and then, to then supplement to people that we know are helping our families. But again, that would probably have to go through PEF and their board, but that could be an idea since, since we all know that the district is not.
Yeah, I, just from the city side on that, board member, we are also looking at establishing a, an assistance fund. Our council did vote to direct the, the city manager to find that. So we're looking at working with the Pasadena Community Foundation. So back when COVID, we had an assistance fund to help. I think looking at how do we support families? I know we've been in contact with Andy Long, but also with PEF about how do we figure out, how do we get funds to, to families? What are the best places? What are the best places? And also to our small local businesses that are very affected. And so, including micro businesses such as push, push cart vendors and the like. So, there is, there is communication and effort around that right now.
Ms. Fredericks?
Yeah, I was gonna ask about PEF as well, and I don't think there's a representative PEF here, but, okay, so, yeah, I was just wondering if the FIRE Fund, Relief Fund of PEF can be dual applied and for people that are struggling right now? Anyway, if there's, what is the update on that? And then, I do appreciate like the big, the overall picture that all of you are painting. It really does like help to see, just to the extent and the severity of the situation. I'm sorry, I don't remember your name from Charla.
Rosanna.
Rosanna, okay. I appreciate your point about the long-term planning. But at the same time, we don't want a COVID, extended like quarantine situation either. So, thank you for giving us that framing. And then, G, your point about decentralization is really a very important point. Because yes, it could, when you centralize something, then everyone knows that's where everybody is, and we could be jeopardizing their safety by doing that. So, that reminds me of COVID in a sense that, in the beginning of COVID, when people went, stayed home, and then my kids were kind of little at the time, we had these pods, the play, like playgroup pods? I forgot the name, but basically, you have one friend that comes over and you, you just have that trusted, like one friend, so that way you don't spread, if anybody got COVID, it wouldn't spread everywhere. But you just have like the one friend. So, I feel like we maybe need to go back to kind of that sort of trusted small pod system. And I'm envisioning like, I don't want the quarantine. I don't want kids to be stuck at home. We just need to get them to school safely. We need to build that trust with our community where they have their trusted friends and just keep, you know, bolstering that. So, I think we have the ingredients, we just have to put it all together.
Ms. Bailey?
All right, good evening, everyone, and I really want to thank you all for being here. I can't wait to connect with my new principal for Washington Elementary. Welcome. For me, I really get the sense that this is going to be our new reality for a long time. And the planning, I think the discussions that we need to be having as a school district moving forward is what that's going to look like. You know, I have nightmares about our teachers returning to work only to have, be accosted in their respective parking lots at their school sites by these agents. And I'm always thinking about this parking lot out here and that parking lot back there and folks trying to come into work. And, you know, it's, it's, it's our new reality, and it is spreading to other ethnicities as well. And it's sad. But what I want to suggest is something that we used to do years ago, and maybe Kim, you'll remember, I was an avid, avid supporter of this Pastor Myra. I don't know if you were in a leadership position with the CCC, but we had our churches adopt schools. And the churches supported those teachers and those principals in any way that they needed. They had personal relationships with the school administration. And I was sitting here thinking first, you know, it would be nice if we could adopt a family and talk about, you know, thinking about what you were saying about how to do things where folks can't actually see who's who in maintaining or establishing something. But if we work through one of your organizations, maybe we could do something like that. Even this board, rather than pull from funds that are already going to one group of students, let's establish a new fund. It, it would be better managed, it'll be manage, more manageable. But I would really like to look into going back to our, our churches and getting them to adopt our schools and support in a fiduciary way, if that's what's needed, or gift cards to grocery stores so whoever is purchasing food supplies for the families can take those cards and go and, and get those supplies. But I think, you know, we're all one community, and we're all represented here tonight, with the exception of PEF, just kidding. But I really think that that, that would be another way forward, another level or layer of support. So, I just wanted to put that out there. I can always go back and get it started back up if you'd like. I don't mind if that's something that we're interested in.
Hello? Yes, thank you. Thank you for that suggestion. I do want to caution us that we know for a fact that many churches were involved in, I'm not gonna say brainwashing people to vote for this administration. So, I just want to put it out there. So, I think while I think it's a great idea, it would be very important. And I don't know how you vet which church, but believe me that we were like totally flabbergasted to know that many of our parents voted for this administration because they were convinced through whatever church said to them. And I don't want to belabor that point, but I think you can only imagine how, what was said to them, that they were thinking it was for their own good. So, I just want to put that word out there as a caution. Thank you.
So, I would rely on Pastor Myra for the CCC. I would also rely on the president of the IMA. So, I would rely on those leaders, and you're in touch with those leaders. I know you're in touch with those leaders. I'm in touch with some of those leaders.
Yeah, I would say we know, we know. And also, we know that there's a lot of people with some big regrets right now. But we, we absolutely know who, who our partners are in the community in terms of churches and where they are. And so, if we did anything like that, we, we would know where to go and where not to go.
Well, and basically, we'd be asking for donations. They don't have to show up at, to the school. But they would just know that their donation is going towards whatever school it is. That's why I'm saying, working through one of your organizations, I'm not sure how it would work out, but I think it merits discussion because it's another huge layer of support, potentially.
Ms. McKenzie?
I just want to say thank you to all of our partners who are here in collaboration and in solidarity with PUSD and our wider community. We are just one of 80 school districts in Los Angeles County. So, it's definitely, is a point of pride that we are being proactive and forward-thinking in terms of how we are working to support our communities and families. I think that with the breadth and depth of resources that are assembled here, those that are not here, but we know that are working in our community, that many hands will make light work. So, I continue to be encouraged by that spirit of collaboration. I think that there have been some points identified this evening about potential needs that we can continue to think about how best to address and happy to have any offline conversations about how to close those gaps. As an organization, I think that we have a governance responsibility to uphold the laws and statutes that govern us as a school district, but also a responsibility to, to the extent possible, to support and protect our students and families. To me, I am very keen on this issue and watching it play out and how we can address it to the best of our ability. Because it's not necessarily solely about rooting out immigration or rooting out people who are allegedly deemed to not belong or not have the appropriate status. This is ultimately a challenge to the validity of the 14th Amendment. It is ultimately a challenge to the concept and the notion of birthright citizenship. And that should frighten every single one of us, because I'm absolutely terrified. So, again, I really want to commend all of you for what you are doing. I do have some ideas on how we can sort of close some gaps. I'll definitely follow up offline. And again, I just want to appreciate the fact that we are standing together in solidarity and in community to do what is right and to do what is righteous and do what is just.
Okay. Mr. Harden?
A very quick question on a very specific point. I know in our protocols, we've talked about our single access entry point, supervised entry points for our school sites. Are there any re-prioritizations possibly that we need to look at in our facilities? Master plan, are there any alterations we need to do? And case in point, some of our high schools are decentralized in terms of their access points. There's multiple buildings. Comes to mind Blair, Blair High School, for instance. There's a tunnel, students take classes, you know, in the middle school, and then they go over to the high school, those types of things. So, I don't, without any, you know, maybe specifics in terms of what the solution might be, but possibly locking down some of those crosspoints.
So, when you reference the tunnel at Blair, are you talking about the real tunnel? Or are you just talking about the, the one over the gym, underneath the gym? Because there's a tunnel that goes all the way to the Rose Bowl. That one stays locked.
That's not the one he's talking about.
That one stays locked. That is not the one that we're talking about.
I did not know about that tunnel, but.
Okay, well, we all know now.
The other one is, the other one is not really a tunnel. It's, well, it's a tunnel, but, yeah, it's just an underpass. It's nothing, it's not dangerous.
Sorry, I have to clarify.
All right, so, thank you, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to our next item. Yes, the superintendent would like to talk.
I, I want to thank everyone for coming here together this evening and all the work that you have been doing. And, you know, I'm very aware of the work that we do together, but I think it's important that we had this meeting so that maybe people who don't know how we work together are watching and, or they see your face and now feel, you know, safe to come to your organization. I also want to appreciate what Mr. Albert said. And a lot of the planning that's gone on, has gone on in caution, right? Not to expose any of our organizations, not to expose our families. We've wrestled with the whole idea of transportation too and said, okay, well then what if ICE is watching this bus that picks up kids on the corner and then watches them go home, right? Are we opening up something that we don't want to do? Not that we couldn't find enough money for transportation for our children. We have worked with our principals, you know, to pair families who are afraid to come out with somebody who is not afraid to come out and bring their children to school. But we still see attendance that's down. And in part of our training, you know, our attorney who is, was recommended by Brooks Allen, who used to work for the ACLU, and I asked him for the reference, very leader in civil rights, not a conservative person, cautioned us about what we can say and what we can do and what can be perceived as us interfering with their operations. And so, I think that's been another reason we've been a bit cautious about some of the things that we've been able to say and, and do. I do think that personally, for me, when I saw the National Guard here, I was like, all right, we're full on now. We're gonna put everything on our front of our webpage. Is that the best thing for me to do for the district? I guess I'll find out. But I do want to caution everybody because what you're doing for our families is important, and they need all of us, and we're all advocates for children. I've said this before and I'll say it again. I'm very fortunate to work with a board that has the same belief systems at their core for children. And there are many boards that are not like our board, right? Where people are trying to bring other people to override and change, you know, book banning and all the things that our board would never even think about. So, and to have all of you as community partners is also something that we're very fortunate to have. So, I hope our community does know from this evening, the ones that are watching and listening, how much we all care about them and that we are here for them. And in any way that we can support them, we will. Lastly, I'm gonna read the statement from PEF. I did speak to Dr. Conyers. We talked at length about what Mrs. Fredericks had just mentioned about the FIRE Relief Fund. And one of the things that the school district does for the foundation is we verify the families and students. For this situation, we have no way of verifying because we don't have lists of the status of our families', immigration status. And we also talked about grants to organizations. And all of, any idea we would have would have to go through his full board in a process, and it wouldn't happen right away. But the organization isn't necessarily set up to do that, but they weren't set up to do FIRE relief and direct services to students either, and they did it. So, they are open to helping us. So, I just want to read the statement. "The Pasadena Educational Foundation stands in full support of the Pasadena Unified School District and its leadership as they plan to protect students and families from immigration enforcement activities on school grounds. In alignment with our mission to work toward equity and excellence in all PUSD schools, we believe schools must remain safe, welcoming spaces where all students can learn and thrive without fear." And they wish they could be here this evening. And what kind of sparked this meeting was a visit from Chief Harris, who wanted to do a presentation for our community. And he was only able to speak in open session in public comment because our agenda had already been posted. And we had a little confusion with tonight's meeting, but he is willing to come to any public meeting, community, or any of our school parent leader meetings. And the main message that he wants to get out is that, do not be afraid to call the police department if you need help. The police department is not working with ICE. And he also made a point in explaining to my leadership team that California police are not even trained to work with ICE. So, across the state, they would not be working with ICE because it's a specialized training. So, I know that our city and the police department are committed to supporting and protecting our families, and we want to make sure that all of our families are not afraid to call the police should they need support in other areas. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So, thank you all so much for being here. It's been really informative, and it's been so, what's the opposite of unsettling? Settling? That you've been working so well in, with us as partners. And it's just really comforting, and it's so good to know that as a trustee, we're on a board for a school district that is working so well with community partners in a really scary, unprecedented time for which there isn't much of a roadmap right now. We're all kind of waking up every morning saying, now what's happened? And there's, it never disappoints, right? There's always something. And I, myself, just feel like I want to cry every day. So, thank you so much for being here. And I wanted to get to our next item here. And after listening to all of this work and listening to G talk about how in these times, what's up is down, and conspiracy can be considered something that's just handing out a card with somebody's rights. That's pretty scary. And I remember this from going to Madison with the superintendent, and we talked about the cards, where they could go, who could give them, who could. And we talked about the cards, where they could go, who could give them, who could not give them, what we could do, what we couldn't do. But there's such professionalism here with all of you. I'm so impressed. So on this next item, which is a resolution, our legal counsel has not had time, I'm talking to the trustees now. The, our legal counsel, who we gave it to, has not had time to finish it, to look at it. We have no information on this. I remember from talking with the chief that I learned some things that were pretty frightening about what we can and can't do. What scares the heck out of me is doing something that's going to put somebody in danger. And I feel very comfortable waiting for the counsel to look at this resolution and then have a full discussion about what we can do, what we can't do, so that we continue to be good partners to the community. So I, with that, I would like to hear from my fellow trustees on the discussion item for this resolution. Does anybody have? Dr. Velazquez.
Thank you. I presented and proposed this resolution, keeping in mind all of our responsibilities as a district to all of the students in PUSD. This resolution asks that Pasadena Unified School District has a plan for training staff, all of our staff and personnel, before the beginning of the semester. The background of that is that students of all legal status, residents and citizens, might be impacted by the current events. And teachers and faculty, teachers and staff at all schools should come to the beginning of the semester, ready to deal with the emotional needs of the students. I think that that is not only in compliance with our responsibilities, but legal in all cases and circumstances. We're asked, this resolution asks that the school district has some sort of uniform policies or guidance that are going through all of the campuses. And I am delighted to hear that some of our campuses have experienced such great participation between the school staff and the students and families that they serve. I would like to ensure that that treatment is consistent throughout the entire PUSD, and there is no better form to ensure that, that in the passing of guidance and policy. The resolution also asks that PUSD establishes a clear path to access to activities and events in the near future. Meaning that if there's a graduation, if there is a Christmas concert, if there is an award ceremony, there are options for virtual participation made available at all schools. That is something that we need to give directive as part of our board because not all schools may have right now the technology, the equipment, or the infrastructure to ensure that their cultural events, et cetera, are available online, accessible through Zoom or YouTube. That is not against the law and does not impede any guidance from the federal government with regards to anything other than as a school district having a responsibility with all of our students. It also asks that communication would be available and regular to all of our schools. Again, it is a practice of standardizing some sort of access to communication through all of our campuses. It is my experience that not all campuses have the same type of relationship with parents and families. It asks that there's some plan or idea for transportation monitoring. It does not ask what the transportation monitoring is. It does not require to explain or designate a particular plan of action, but it does require that the district have a plan for transportation of students and fam, of students, right? And finally, there is an issue of making sure that there are some safety perimeters in, in schools. So, the spirit of this resolution is to ensure that before the beginning of the semester, we have some reassurance that there is some uniform practices that not only incorporate policy, but that, or order of command, but also that helps people understand what to do. Finally, I think that it is important that, just like we have an emergency fund designated for all of the issues dealing with the fires, the board should give the superintendent some authority to address some of the immediate and growing needs that the school is gonna face between now and the beginning of the semester. And because we don't know what those needs may be, we need to have some sort of flexibility as a board to give Dr. Blanco the possibility of making those adaptations in the case that is needed.
Given some of the comments about needs that we've heard tonight, I wasn't sure if it would make sense to add another area, which would be, I just threw out continuity of education. And it's really about providing, making sure that students have devices, hotspots, internet access. It, it sounds like if there are families where in-person school for their students won't work, we're going to say CIS, much as, well, as we did with, after we came back in person, we said, if you need to continue at home, we said CIS, Center for Independent Study is the thing to do. I think if we think that that is potentially something that kids will want, then we would want to make sure that our elementary and middle school coverage at CIS, you know, is greater than perhaps we were thinking of for next year. I just don't know if that's an area to add. Just wanted to throw that out. I know all the other ones are already covered. Scott?
I think in some cases with, with the language in the, in the resolution, we, you know, we know that we are doing, actively doing a great many of them. So maybe considering being specific about acknowledging that certain things, certain elements in this language are happening. And then potentially then in the resolving clauses, then say, in addition to those pre-existing initiatives, these would be the deltas, you know, the things that, that we're not doing that we can, and I think Board Member Kenny talking about learning continuity, those are things that potentially might identify in our resolving clauses. I want to, I want to give deference to the fact that I think the district is, you know, from what I've heard tonight and from Dr. Blanco's comments, that many of the things that are, that are addressed in the resolving clauses are actually effectively, you know, happening. But I do, and then the, the other point that I'd like to make is, and I forget where it is, it's on the first page at the bottom about reviewing protocols, reviewing initiatives, reviewing the progress. That, that's defined here as weekly. I don't know if that's happening currently now. And, you know, once the school year starts, would it be a weekly cadence for reviewing protocols and such and so forth? So perhaps that's something we, we should pay attention to, to see if, if, if staff supports that and that we would keep that kind of cad, that identified cadence.
Ms. McKenzie?
Is it possible to do two things? The first is to continue to pursue the avenue of having counsel review the language as it is and ensure that there are not any potential landmines, pitfalls, or things that we're not aware of in terms of what we as an organization have the ability to do, say, act, et cetera. Just for purposes of doing good due diligence. And then simultaneously, ask the superintendent and her team to begin to frame a plan for rolling out protocol, training, information, resources, support to district employees for the start of the school year. I think that we're in sort of a both and situation where we probably, we certainly need the legal guidance in terms of ensuring that the path that we're on is a smart one, but also utilizing the time while we're obtaining said guidance to ensure that the planning is being developed. Because one of the pieces of language in the, the resolution says that, you know, there's a constitutional right for students to have a public education. Currently, as we read the words literally, there is no actual constitutional right to, to education in the Constitution. So we don't want to make statements, even though these are values that we all hold and agree to, and they should be, but the actual words that are in the governing document do not exist. We don't want to make that kind of a statement. Let's just make sure that we're getting some good eyes to ensure that we are, you know, dotting i's appropriately, crossing t's appropriately, while we're still working to plan to make sure that we're doing what we know we need to do to support our students.
Yeah, that was Ms. Fredericks.
I think trustee McKenzie, maybe this is very similar to what you're saying. I, I'm very, I, I wish this was posted, but anyway, I'm trying to figure out what the timeline is here because I feel like this is very urgent. You can basically cite a story from every, everything you said and do a one-for-one connection to this resolution. I mean, everything about transportation, like making our school events safe, you know, because like, I think one of your church events was, you did the extra safety protocols to make sure that the event was safe. That's something we have to do too, like we have to rethink our events. I think this, so much rides on this, like, it just takes a moment and, you know, if we, if our students, our families, our staff are taken, that's, that's it. You know, and that's why this is so urgent that we have to tighten this as much as we can just to, and improve as, you know, iteratively. That's, we have to keep making it better, making it better because they're also changing their strategy, and so we have to out-strategize them. So, I'm very glad we have this. I'm just trying to figure out how we can do this before the end of the year. And I, I think trustee McKenzie was saying, you know, sort of like, how can we do the legal part? Ensure it's legal and get this going. I think that's what you're getting at. And because it is urgent, so I just want to know, can we do this? And I, I am concerned about the funding sources because I'm sure that we're gonna need some funding. So in your, if we do have a proposal, if the, if you create a plan, we probably need to know how much is this gonna cost, what the funding sources, possible funding sources are, that sort of thing. And then, yeah, a timeline.
So, we have been training since January. That's what I showed you this evening. So are you asking me to retrain all the staff again that we've already trained? Because I'll let the principal respond, but I do think when we train the principals, they go back and train the teachers. That's usually the model we have, right? So have you, it's okay if you haven't, but have you discussed all the protocols with your staff?
Since January, we have been, been meeting with the Hopeful Horizons team. So anytime I get information, that information is then dispersed to staff during staff meetings. That will be reviewed in August once folks return as well because there, there have been some new things that have happened. So we will review that. In terms of even summer programs, we've been meeting, learns has been meeting with all the coordinators. I've been meeting with office staff, with anyone who's in charge, same thing with after-school support. And like I said, it's not if it happens, but we're preparing for when it happens. So I feel very confident to say that, that we know what's going on. Even when it's, when it's just, when it's a scare, like, hey, I heard this, you know? And it's like, nope, we, we go into action right away, like, don't open the door, so. But all that will be reviewed because it's important that everyone's on the same page.
We're gonna continue working with, we can check the records of who's been trained and who hasn't with F3. So as things evolve, we'll be doing updates on the training if something changes from what we've already trained staff on or new personnel. And I was thinking about what Dr. Velazquez was mentioning, a lot of our, about training everyone before school. We do have certain sets of training that we require all staff to take online. And I can check with our company and see if this is one of the modules that we can, you know, purchase and require. That's one of the best ways to make sure everybody gets the training. Probably not the most effective way for people to learn, but it does give us a record that everybody took it because there's certain things that are required by law that, you know, everyone is trained in. So I can look into that as well. Hopeful Horizons, the internal document is our plan. We don't just let everything out of the box because there's things in the plan we like to keep internally.
Ms. Bailey?
So, this resolution, in my opinion, is a bit, I guess, presumptuous. It again feels like the board in, in bringing this forward, if we were to approve this, would be ignoring what is already in place, which some of it is in here. You know, I am, I'm really concerned that the message that something like this sends is one that we're ignoring what we're hearing from our school administrators, our school site administrators. We're ignoring what we're hearing from our superintendent about what's already in place and instead moving towards stating that there's no equity throughout our district with regards to training and access to our staff for being trained and knowing how to keep their sites safe and their students safe, which is something I have not experienced as, when I was an employee here. And I have not heard that from the school sites where I'm the liaison to as a school board member. I think if something like that is happening, it should not wait to be brought forward to the superintendent. That's something that should be made plain right away. I do know that there are principals' meetings. There's more principals' meetings than the law should allow. So I know that the information is getting to the principals from district leadership. What I don't want to see in a, in a resolution is the work that's already being done. We need to acknowledge that in a different way. We need to acknowledge that in a different way. It doesn't need to be policy because it's already part of the policy. It's part of the, the district's culture. It's part of the process. It's part of how you run a district. It's, it's being done. We have great leadership. I'm concerned about some of the things in the district. One which board member Patrice pointed out, about the constitutional rights. And I'm actually glad that this didn't get posted because it doesn't exist that way. The other thing that I'm concerned about is alluding to transportation. I'm terrified about putting those students all in one place like that, on a bus, that can be pulled over. And who knows what can happen? So I'm concerned about that aspect of safety, if we want to talk about being safe. And again, I'm concerned that this has not been vetted. It has not been vetted by the board collectively. And I understand, I guess, it has not been vetted by legal, which, just looking at some of the language and given this entire situation and the, the matter in itself, we need to make sure that all of our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed. So I do not want to see us rush into this. I have no concern, I mean, no worries, I should say, about whether or not staff is going to be trained for the coming semester. Because those trainings happen every August before the first day of school. And so I know that that happens. And what I would like to request of my colleagues with all due respect is can we have discussions about what's happening before we do something as important as a resolution? Because this resolution becomes policy by which we direct the superintendent or we must follow ourselves. This is important. And I don't take them lightly. But if we could trust Dr. Blanco's leadership, which she has not given us any reason not to at this point. If we could trust her leadership, we wouldn't have to second-guess what's happening. When we say that something's not happening in this district, we need to know it from facts. We need to bring evidence. We need to bring evidence. And again, when it's first heard, it absolutely needs to go to Dr. Blanco. We are not the problem solvers. We don't do the work of staff. Okay, that's what we have Dr. Blanco for. And she is the only employee that this board oversees, has oversight for. And so anything that comes to us, it should rightfully go to her. By looking at this individually, saying, well, oh yeah, we should include this because this is happening and we should include that. Again, we haven't had an opportunity to vet anything that is being added or look for fact-checking, anything that is in here at this point. So tonight, I can't support moving it forward. I would like to request that it be postponed until we have a chance to hear from legal and look at it again as a board so that we can go through it with a fine-tooth comb, like we do our resolutions usually, and make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
Dr. Velazquez?
Hi, um, okay, so I would like to propose some changes or edits to the language of the resolution. So please follow along with me. So it would say, whereas the Pasadena Unified School District is committed to fostering a safe, inclusive, and supportive learning environment for all students, families regardless of immigration status. Skip to number three. Whereas feral immigration enforcement, no, let's, let's eliminate three, two. Whereas the district has a duty to ensure staff are prepared to respond appropriately to any, eliminate here, activity in accordance with the support, uh, no, activity, sorry, to support the well-being of students and families. So that fourth sentence would read again. Whereas the district has a duty to ensure the staff are prepared to respond appropriately to any activity to support the well-being of students and families. Now there be it resolved that. Number one, the board directs the superintendent to develop and present a comprehensive plan for training and protocols to start in the 25, 26 academic year. It should be easy to compliance, since we've heard that we already have it, so, perfect. Number two, the superintendent should also ensure that families are informed of the district's safety and non-discrimination policies in clear and accessible format. Number three, the district shall develop and implement protocols for transportation of students. Number four, to ensure that all families have equitable access to school programs and celebrations, the district shall explore virtual options for key events and encourage schools to offer hybrid options for small-scale gatherings. Number five, the district will ensure or explore access to devices, hotspots, and internet for all students. Be it further resolved that the superintendent shall return to the board with an implementation timeline, resource needed, and a proposed budget, if any, for the full execution of the plan. End of resolution. At which point, when the superintendent presents such plan, we can decide on the scope and extent of that plan how being implemented.
So I, I hear what you're saying, Dr. Velazquez.
And I would like to present a motion to approve the resolution as edited.
Point of order?
This isn't an action item.
It's not an action item.
It's a discussion.
Thank you.
And what I would like to say is that we don't have legal here. And I think it's very important that in these times, given everything we have heard and know, that we move ahead with the legal counsel that we have with the district. I also don't want to reiterate things that are already in a previous resolution at the start of the year when the new administration came in. And I don't want to denigrate the work already been done. Excuse me? The word was denigrate.
The grade is non-racialized word for, in a synonym, sorry.
Ms. Bailey, do you have something to say? Uh, Kim?
It, it sounds like we are, had before us maybe a choice. So I think, remember McKenzie laid out that really two things need to happen, that there does need to be a plan for the opening of school, which it sounds like a considerable amount is in, in place already. And hearing some of the other needs that have come up tonight, I, I assume the superintendent and other staff may want to make some modifications. And I, I hope the concern about some of the facilities perhaps being open is one that we look at. I mean, I know we have single entry into the school buildings, but I know we do have some open campuses. So I think we can rest assured, and I think we kind of have to, that the planning for, first day of school, the 14th? I can't remember the first day. The 18th. That it can't wait for a resolution to be approved. So we will have to double-track. I think the question before us, in terms of having a resolution, is whether we will have a discussion of a resolution on the 7th, August 7th, our next scheduled board meeting, or an action item at that meeting? It, it sounds like it, that will probably still need to be a discussion and with action following after that. Just in terms of where we are and, and our ability to talk together as a board prior to that time. I mean, I, I think there's an opportunity then for not just legal, but for other feedback to be given to the superintendent and to, you know, pull together or change pieces as, as, you know, as makes sense. So I guess, I mean, I don't know to say, is, I, I guess the suggestion is, is that we have legal, keep looking at it. We know that staff is coming to us, is working on a plan to open schools in general with all of this in mind. And that this come back to the board meeting on the 7th as a discussion item.
Ms. Bailey?
So, except for the language about what's happening with ICE, there's really nothing new in this resolution that isn't already being done. I question whether or not we need it, but now that it's here, I don't want to take anything away from the maker. I love supporting my colleagues on the board when and where I can. But I don't want to be rushed. I don't want us to rush through this. I want us to make sure that if we are going to have such a resolution, that we get the right i's on it. That includes staff, Dr. Blanco, and her team. Because there's a lot of duplicate language in here that's already, as Jennifer pointed out, in other resolutions. Which is not a bad thing, but, which means it's already being done. So I don't know if those things should be referenced. But I really think that we really need to take our time and not rush through this just to have something done by the start of school when it's already going to be done anyway. So that's it for me.
So, you know, and, and maybe one way forward on this, given there's some time factor, is that, and thank you, Dr. Velazquez, for editing, whittling down a little bit of the content. But what I might suggest is that, all in all, this, the intentions of this are valuable. I think that's, that's the, the purpose of this. And that maybe, you know, less is more. And that this resolution ultimately ends up reading less like an operational plan and more about, you know, a statement of values. We believe in training and protocols. We believe in effective, you know, equitable communication. We believe that schools should be safe and protected spaces so that, that gives the flexibility of staff and the superintendent to do what they have to do to, 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 or continue doing what they're already doing to be within compliance of those values. But it, it doesn't read like a roadmap so that it's not, you know, like a statement of work. And that might be my suggestion. That way, you know, we have an opportunity to pass it quickly and with, with the intention that it was written. I think it's valuable intention. I think it shows that we, our heart and our minds are in the right place for our vulnerable families. And I think, to me, that's the most important piece.
Anyone else on this? Yes, Ms. Fredericks?
Trustee Harden, I, I, I guess I appreciate the spirit of your comment, but I, I worry that you're kind of removing the whole, the meat of this, which is to have a plan. Is there any way to, legal to kind of take what is here, remove what's questionable or not permitted? Remove that and then have that go on August 7th? Is there, and then we have a discussion at that point? What, I don't understand why we can't have that done. Like, it's already pared down. And then it'll be pared down even more with legal. So it's basically a framework. And at that point, you know, we could discuss it? We can, you know, add to it? It's just that it'll basically take probably, if we just discuss it on August 7th, then, then at that point, we have to vote to re-agendize it and then it'll be September. And then Dr. Blanco will need to take another month, or I don't know how long, to bring a plan forward or we, so it'll just be like three months. And we meet twice in August, okay. Anyway, I'm just worried about the time.
Ms. McKenzie?
So my thinking is that Dr. Velazquez has suggested some edits to the language. The language as edited is what we send to council for review. I also do hear and appreciate Trustee Harden's recommendation that our language in the resolution as it being a policy document is more so about our values as an organization versus giving very prescriptive direction to the superintendent on how to implement said plan. Again, I think that she has been as forthcoming and articulate as she can be about what has occurred and what is occurring. And there doesn't seem to be any unreadiness on her part or her team's part, for she's speaking on their behalf, to ensure that there is a plan for the start of school. I, I certainly think that we as a governing body could certainly allow the edits that Dr. Velazquez proposed tonight to be what are submitted to council. And that on the 7th, whatever the revisions are that come back from council can be presented to us for a discussion. And then, as Trustee can remind us, we do have two meetings in August that we could vote at the end of August at our second meeting on the resolution as a policy document and a value statement for us as an organization. That's a path I can support.
Dr. Velazquez?
Dr. Blanco, do you disagree with any of the asks of the resolution as a mission for our institution?
I don't disagree with the majority of them. We're already doing, what I can't agree to is the things that have to be negotiated. And so I'm not saying there would not be agreement from the teachers' union to take out no hybrid learning, but it would be a conversation that we have to have with them because the current contract says they don't do hybrid learning. So we could only offer CIS. And then I think-
But I think, wait, and I, excuse me very, I'm sorry. Because that is just what the plan would explain, right? It would be something about, okay, there is this interest in accessibility and we would ask for you to develop, what's the plan based on that, right? Is that, I, I thought that that was the spirit of the ask.
Yeah, I, I guess what you're saying, asking me, is if I'm against anything that's in there. No, the things that are in there that we could do are already doing, and we could enhance them, right? And make them better. But some of the things that are in there involve more than just me, like having every parent meeting be virtual and all the school meetings. So those are things, we just have to get agreement from other people on too. That, and you mentioned having access to the technology, making sure that every school would have a main room where that access could happen, like we have this board and here, things like that.
But I don't think that the spirit, well, I want to clarify that the spirit of the resolution is not to be prescriptive about how to, and in, but is to ask everybody to figure out, or to think about how to, and then that's where your plan would come in, right?
Yes, but by-
Your implementation plan would come and like, this is what we can do and this is what we can't do, right? Okay, so in that spirit, I would like to withdraw the resolution as presented with a commitment or, or, and then ask for some sort of consensus from the board in the spirit and the values that, in the spirit of the request, in the different areas of the request. And again, I do not, I am very sensitive and I understand very clearly what are the needs for safety and confidentiality. And that is not what is meant with this resolution. What is meant is, do you have a plan that you can reassure us? Yes, perfect. Yes, perfect. Do you have a transportation plan that meets that? Yes. Do you need additional resources to meet the plan that you've implemented? You do, then let's move to present that. And so I think that these times require adaptability and action. And I think that we're drowning in bureaucracy and becoming an impediment to moving forward. So is there consensus from the board?
So you're withdrawing the resolution that we have?
Yes, I'm withdrawing the resolution and instead asking for some consensus in the directive that we're giving Dr. Blanco.
What is the directive that we're giving Dr. Blanco?
I don't want to put words in Dr. V's mouth, but I'm going to speak from what I am hearing is that the superintendent has laid out what has been done for staff thus far in terms of training and supporting our school communities. She has also indicated there's a commitment to continue to do so and also to address the issues that have been raised tonight by way of our community partners and to find ways to identify avenues to close some of those gaps where possible. That's what I have heard. And I believe that Dr. Velazquez is asking, do we as a board agree with that path forward that she is currently on? And if so, she will draw her resolution.
Yeah, what is the directive? I'm feeling rushed into this because a directive to her, even though she's already working and the partners are already working, I don't want to disturb or disrupt any of that. And I'm feeling a little, I'm feeling rushed on this.
Well, Patrice, you do such a good job in your interpretation of the letter of the rule or the law or whatever you hear. So could you please define the directive that you hear in all of this?
So what I heard is that Dr. Velazquez is going to withdraw her resolution. And in doing so, because of what Dr. Blanco has laid out in terms of what staff is already doing, that we will support her continuing in that path.
So the directive is for the board, not for Dr. Blanco?
Correct.
Ah. That we support.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
That we support the path that's already in place and that we will, yeah, yeah, yeah. Not that we're giving any new instructions. Forgive the bad-
Directive that we support her in the path she's on with our amazing community partners and the work being done.
Yeah, my directive is not a collective clap, to be clear.
Yes, Tina.
What I don't want us to leave here and not do is leverage the great wisdom of our community and say, oh, we checked this box and we're done. So in the spirit of the directive, I think, I hope that Dr. Blanco will also take this opportunity to leverage our community in the spirit of the resolution, I suppose.
Hello? Sorry. I just want to say, the Student Assembly continues to support all immigrant families, and we just want to help them in the best ways as possible. It seems like this is what you guys are trying to do. We just, I just wanted to say a couple of things about what we talked about in our meeting today. Some things we talked about are that these ICE raids are not just an attack on immigrant families, they're an attack on our constitution and our democracy and our rights that we try to uphold as the United States of America. And like others said today, the importance of empathy in these times, really feeling how these other people feel and understanding these are real people going through impacts that their families are being torn apart. And I just want to say thank you for all these partners here today and all the work you guys are doing on the board. And I just want to reiterate that.
Thank you, student board member, and thank you for the empathy. There are forces out there trying to get rid of that word, what times we're in. Fatima, can you help us with this?
Okay, so I just to get everybody on the same page.
Yes.
So Dr. Velazquez is withdrawing the resolution, which means that I will email our lawyers and say we don't need it anymore. And the board is agree and reach consensus on asking the superintendent to-
Supporting.
Continue.
Supporting.
We're supporting, you're supporting the superintendent to continue with the plan that it's already-
They've been working on with our partners.
With the community partners. And to-
Yes.
And professional development, where Carlos is, so are we doing like an update for the board on August 7th or?
That I don't know.
Okay.
A what?
Update of the plan.
Yeah, let's do it now.
I'm not sure that with people being gone in July, that we will have what we're doing in the beginning of the year and what we have planned for launch. That will include some of it.
And maybe it's not necessarily on the 7th of August, but it would be great to have you come back and let us know of any changes, additions that have resulted from this conversation or your ongoing work with the partners or changes that, you know, changes in whatever's happening, you know, in the outside world that could also require changes. So again, I don't know if that's on the 7th or just some kind of periodic updates. Because I do think we heard things that might add to some of the work that's happening.
Did you want to say anything, superintendent? Did you want to say anything?
No, we definitely have a training plan for launching the year that does focus on a lot of this. And so we can give a status update on that when we come back. And, you know, we, like, working with our partners is something that we do on a regular basis, so we will continue that. And as things evolve, right, we don't know what's going to happen in this situation, how much more intensified it will become. And as things evolve, we'll be working closely with them to express our needs and they will express what they're hearing the gaps are. And if we have new information, we can bring that back on the 7th.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
Okay. Just to make sure that the update, I just want to make sure that we double-check the confidential, like, the security risk of that. And I'm sure you probably, I just want to make sure-
That's a good idea.
That that's a check before you-
Yeah.
Publicizing.
Great idea.
Things can be confidential and so it doesn't go out in the public.
All right, that's wonderful. So we are going to adjourn right now. Thank you.